So colleagues, I mean, shouldn't this be information that we have available to us? This is yet another example of this body undertaking a policy which is a feel-good policy that will ultimately end up, you know, what I believe, end up hurting the very people we are trying, that we are trying to help. I believe that this will hurt the industry's ability to provide the same amount of jobs that they won't make other choices or that we won't have hotels leave our area. We know that there are amendments pending before us right now that make this a better proposal for both sides, and yet this body, it sounds like, is not even willing to consider those, those options. Like so many other things that come before us, I believe that we should explore the unintended consequences of actions that this body takes as policy. Before we just take the, the, the easy way out, we all want to help the workers. We all want to help people be able to live in the city that they work, but we also need to ensure that those jobs are still there for them, you know, after we make these changes. By passing what I see as the amending motion to, before us today, I, I just feel that we are going to, you know, to be taking an axe to the local economy and, you know, to our city. I strongly urge all of us to either consider getting this information before we take this what will be an incredibly important vote to our city of Los Angeles pending, not only, we don't want to build hotels for, just because we have the Olympics coming. We want to build hotels to help the economy of the city of Los Angeles. We want to build hotels so we increase the amount of tourism to the city of Los Angeles so that when people come here, we want to increase the amount of hotels so that we have the T O T that we can expect into our coffers so we, as a city, can do the amazing programs that all of you, this entire body fights for every single day, to help the residents of the city of Los Angeles. Mr. President, I will, I know I'm over, but I will come back if I have additional questions.
We all want to pay workers more. You have employers that want to pay workers more, but in an environment where the economy has not recovered to our pre-pandemic levels, which everyone was basing this off of a conversation that we have fully recovered, that was already a false start for the commencement of this, of this proposal. But as we are currently recognizing that we're not there, even by our own numbers, looking at what Lawa has provided us, indicating that we are still not even at 100% recovery from 2019, to as well as the hotels, now you're going to tack on a 30% increase to your point. It's the lower echelon that ends up getting the biggest impact because, let's be honest, the same inflationary pressures that residents are experiencing are the same inflationary pressures that the business owners and operators are experiencing. So now, the difference is, is that now you're, we're proposing and tacking on a burden of 30% increase to their bottom lines to operate. I don't understand how that's sustainable. And to your point, you had indicated previously, or at least in the conversations that we had, is we expect at that level that we're going to actually see job loss. And for me, my biggest concern is that, are you really only, you're, you're declaring winners and losers. The losers are going to be the business owners that can no longer maintain their level of employer, uh, employment for those individuals. But by the way, it's a false promise for the people that are fighting for these increases because they will be, they're going to be the ones unemployed because there won't be a job available for them.
I can only say that the data in California and in many other places very strongly contradicts those statements. May I very strongly contradict these apocalyptic job loss scenarios? There's just, there's no precedent for that, especially in a place like Los Angeles. Nothing. It gives me an example in the last, since the Second World War, there hasn't been a single adverse cycle like that in response to wage increases. I'd also like to clarify that a wage increase of 30% does not change the firm's bottom line by 30%. Labor costs in this category are only about 20% of operating costs. So you, you're really talking about, you're talking about point two times 30%. On average, for the industry, as I said, the industry is very heterogeneous. Small firms will face higher costs, but you've got to recognize that these adjustments are fractional. For workers, it's 30% of their livelihood that you're talking about.
It's not fractional.
Distributionally, it's quite different, that's all.
It's not fractional, however, it's not fractional when you're talking about the cost associated, to your point, which you already indicated, is that on the lower, the smaller entities will borrow at much higher rates and costs in order to implement and realize that. And this is all compounded by the fact that we also know, in Los Angeles, we've got areas like Burbank that won't be implementing something like this, Pasadena, Santa Monica, all of the other surrounding municipalities, but we're going to now saddle this here in Los Angeles. And so that's the increased, that's the increased pressures that we're going to be experiencing. Not also withstanding when we talk about where so many of the events for, that we're proposing, you know, we're talking about Olympic wage, when so many of the events are now starting to look like they're not even going to be in the city proper because they've been distributed across the region, we're actually potentially saddling more of these operators with, again, the increased cost and burden, but the likelihood that a lot of the attendees, because of where the events are happening, in Inglewood at SoFi, in Long Beach, and some of these other areas, could very well not be by and large here in the city of Los Angeles. And so those are some of the other factors that are very real, that we need to be considering when we talk about these increases, because those bottom lines really matter to the survival of these businesses actually being able to provide the very jobs that we want to continue to care for these workers. So again, my hope is that we're not creating the best-paid unemployed workforce in the country by creating an environment that doesn't allow these businesses to continue to sustain a level of employment for these very same workers. And I'm concerned that what we're making, we're, we're getting very shallow information and I, and, you know, I'm really troubled by procedurally how this has all occurred as well, because I also asked some questions specifically about T O T that I was very disappointed with the lack of real clear response on, uh, in these, in the response in the report. But just very disappointed overall that we're, we're having, we're, we're accelerating this conversation. And I understand people's frustrations on both sides, but the workers are, I think, in many cases are being, they're going to be adversely impacted by this false promise because we aren't really taking of, again, the scope of the conversation has been very limited at this juncture. And it's, uh, it's unfortunate because I also know that a lot of these businesses that will be most heavily impacted are minority-owned, are small business owners who have been struggling to make it, and they're the ones that are going to be the front end of, of hurting the most in this, by this policy. And I think it's unfortunate that we're having this conversation, colleagues, in a manner that has, in a, in a substitute that has already eliminated the ability for each of us to have a more robust conversation with each of the amendments that we've proposed, that we're all working on. But essentially, this substitute motion is silencing any other part of the conversation, and I don't understand why.
Did you call the small ones to ask how the vacancy rates and the larger ones are driving price competitions? They have nowhere to move their rates. Did you ask any of them about any of that?
We did not, but we reached out to the Hotel Association very early on in this process and asked if they could provide data from the smaller operators, and they were unwilling to do so.
Yeah, I, I've heard you blame the Hotel Association several times, but I've still never heard an answer that anybody responsible for preparing the analysis picked up a phone and actually talked to hotel operators across any size or jurisdiction in the city to make any meaningful conclusions or assumptions from.
As.
What am I missing?
As Henry mentioned, we got very limited feedback, almost no usable data from them. All of our research is based on publicly available official data, and we made assumptions in order to do the scenario analysis. You have to make assumptions, and we can adjust those assumptions and see the consequences. For example, I talked about the prospect of having a small business exemption. We've seen this in many municipalities. We evaluated this. Basically, it reduces the cost, yes, but it also reduces the benefits. And in this particular policy, we see a three-to-one benefit-cost ratio. So, fine, you can defer the costs for a category of firms that you feel might be disadvantaged. I'm not, I'm agnostic about this. I'm just trying to be objective. But if you do that, you're going to defer the benefits too, for the communities, for the workers. You just have to accept that. If you want to make those exceptions, it's fine, but, but these are all the business of scenario work. Just look at these numbers and you will get a feeling for what the salience is. And the salience is, as I said, this policy, as it was originally stated, is a potentially a robust catalyst for growth in the region, a potent catalyst for economic growth across the region. We're looking at the prospects for job growth, 7,000 additional jobs by 2028 in L.A. City, 5,500 jobs in the rest of the proximate region, the county and, well, the neighboring cities and the states, $700 million in additional local income for local enterprises and individuals, $550 million, that's in L.A. City alone, 700 million by 2028 annual benefits, and $550 million of additional income for neighboring economies. These are not at all trivial benefits. So in any case, you have in your hands a very potent tool for economic growth. How you want to administer and implement it should very much be informed by the distributional consequences, no question about that. But how you decide to do it is up to you. I feel it's our responsibility to tell you that reducing the costs for any stakeholders is going to also reduce the benefits for the overall economy and, of course, for the, for the workers too, inevitably.
So thank you, so thank you for that, and I hear you, and I think that those assumed benefits, assuming that the assumptions were accurate would make some sense.
Sorry, I'm really sorry for that. I wasn't able to hear you.
I think the benefits, to the extent they have been described in the report, would make some sense, but again, they are assumptions that haven't been vetted against actual reality in the city of Los Angeles. So let me ask it a little bit different. If your analysis made different assumptions, given low hotel occupancy, low average daily rates, low domestic and international passenger levels at LAX and in retail, would your results be different?
Yes, of course they would. For example, if the Olympic event were incorporated in our scenarios, you would see a tailwind for the entire hospitality sector that would overwhelm these results.
And did you talk to?
And we don't see, as I've said, we don't see any empirical evidence of massive layoffs in response to minimum wages anywhere in California. What is so special about L.A., Ms. Stott?
I'm going to come back to layoffs in just a minute, but did you speak to anyone at L.A. 28?
Folks, pardon me, Councilmember Park, pardon me for a second. Look, folks, when you all spoke, you all had the attention of the body. We want to make sure that council can have this discussion uninterrupted, so we appreciate your enthusiasm, but please keep the interruptions to zero.
Did you speak to L.A. 28 or the hotel industry about the caps on room rates related to the Olympics?
Uh, we did not evaluate that.
Okay. Um, in your report back, you also.
Councilman, we did reach out to L.A. 28. They do have some contracts that are pending. There has been some discussion of those, some of those hotels pulling out. At the end of the day, it's going to be a business decision for those hotels whether they decide to stay in the Olympics contracts or not. As I've said, there's only a few that have indicated that they might pull out, but because being part of the Olympic program is very lucrative for some of the hotels because there is a good 100% occupancy during an entire timeframe. It's not just a few days at a time, and so it is rather significant and be part of their business decision. And L.A. 28 was also very clear that they did not want to weigh in on a policy issue such as this, they did not want to influence that policy.
So thank you for that, and I appreciate that you asked those questions, but my point here is that none of that is reflected in the assumptions made or in the analysis provided. So I'm going to move on to a different question. The report also responded to my letter from May of 2023 asking for impacts to workers at different hotel types and sizes, including limited-service hotels, boutique hotels, and chain hotels. And your response in your letter back is hotels in this industry are modeled as a homogeneous industry. So I want to make sure I'm totally clear. Your analysis makes no distinction between an independently owned and operated limited-service hotel with no wedding venue, no spa, and a Ritz-Carlton with luxury amenities, right?
I think I was clear about this at the beginning. This study does not capture the heterogeneity of either the hospitality sector or the air transport sector, and in the context of hotels, we approached the industry to get the data needed for such granular assessment. They were not forthcoming with that data. We can't responsibly do research without objective representative data, and it's not been made available by the industry.
So your answer is yes. You make no distinction between a limited-service hotel and a Ritz-Carlton with a full suite of amenities?
Absolutely. That's correct. Yes, these are average results for the industry, yes.
Okay, so then I assume I'm correct also that it makes no distinctions between hotels that are carrying heavy debt mortgages and struggling to meet debt service levels and those that aren't?
Absolutely not.
Haven't looked at that.
It's an aggregation of the industry.
Okay, so this analysis, again, does not factor in operating costs, profitability, revenue generation across hotels.
How would we do that without the data? It's not, it hasn't been made available to us, even though we requested it.
So they're just all the same? Is that right? That's the assumption, all hotels are the same?
The industry is treated as a homogeneous entity. And as I said in my opening remarks, it's very important to recognize the heterogeneity, and you have the capacity to do that with your policy.
Okay. Um, I think it's pretty clear that all hotels have been treated as the same, and no real work went into making or understanding or analyzing the distinctions across hotel type, size, or geography.
The information was not available. It's not about the effort that was made. We can't invent data that's being protected.
Okay, well, we have heard repeatedly throughout public comments over the last year and a half that there are real differences between hotels.
Yes, of course there are, and I was emphasizing this in my opening. It's true, wait, this is true of every industry in the economy. And in fact, we're using the same methodology that was used for the original work 10 years ago by three consulting firms did independent assessments of the minimum wage policy in Los Angeles City. There was a peer review of all three of those studies. They were all based on the same methodology.
Okay, I know you didn't because I actually read the report, but did you talk to hotel owners in West Hollywood about what percentage of their workforce has been laid off?
I read two presentations that were commissioned by West Hollywood. These were not responsible research products, I'm sorry, but they were opinion polls that made no statistically defensible link between layoffs and the minimum wage. Absolutely not.
Any of the 19 cities that have done similar wage ordinances?
We don't have any definitive evidence linking the minimum wage to layoffs, and there's no anecdotal evidence either, because as I said, if you look at the job data, look at it for Los Angeles City, look at it for the state of California, you won't see a significant reduction in employment that can be identified with the implementation of minimum wages. It's just the evidence is not there.
Well, I, I see you say this, and on page eight, where you're talking about this research from UC San Francisco, you write, "Yes, Virginia, losing your job increases the risk of becoming homeless." What's missing here is evidence of any causal link between minimum wage ordinances and unemployment. I've heard you double or triple down on that.
That's what I just said, yes, same word.
So let me just ask you, have you talked to a fast-food worker who has been replaced by a kiosk?
What would one worker tell me about the economy?
That they lost their job.
My research is based on, it's on objective representative data, not opinion polls.
Well, those job losses are real, and I would encourage folks to talk to people.
Job losses are real, but so far, thank God, they've been extremely minimal. What you can tell workers today is, yes, we'll give you a chance to get 35, 55% higher compensation, and you've got a 95% job probability of keeping your job. That looks like a pretty good bet.
I don't know, when I walked into Fat Tomato in Mar Vista.
That looks like a pretty good bet. And actually, it's a 97% chance of keeping your job if you look at the layoff data. There's just nothing there, I'm sorry.
When I walked into Fat Tomato in Mar Vista and the entire front of the house staff is gone, when I walk into the local sandwich shop in my neighborhood in Venice and you order at a kiosk, those are real people who really lost their jobs.
And that's because of the minimum wage? No, it's not because of the minimum wage. That's because of the post-COVID, the tail of COVID, and it's because of other inflation.
Can you show me where that assumption's coming from?
Much more, that's not an assumption, you can see it in the data.
All right, colleagues, I have shared before that we all want the same thing, a thriving tourism economy that pages, pays fair wages to workers and also encourages entrepreneurial spirit and sets businesses up for success. People need to earn more, they should earn more, and no one questions that, but these decisions can't be based on a vacuum, they shouldn't be made in the absence of meaningful data or information, and they shouldn't be made on false assumptions that no one even bothered to test. We have to be deliberate, we need to be thoughtful, and we need to prioritize a policy that strikes a balance. Going too far in one direction can hurt our workers, going too far in another direction is going to hurt the very industry that keeps thousands of these people employed. And I fear that today's substitute motion, as it is before us, is going to cost people their jobs. We are going to lose our small businesses, we are going to lose our small and medium-sized hotels and our boutique hotels and our limited-services hotels, and today's action is only going to further fuel a decline in our essential tourism sector, which, by the way, is an essential source of our city's general fund revenue. There's going to be consequences to hurting people who we want to actually help and support, those people who are going to be cut, who are going to be replaced with machines. I, I think that it is irresponsible of us, based on the record that we have in front of us today, to move on any of this.
Yes, thank you, David, and thank you to the CLA. I should have said that upfront. The second thing is, just so that I'm clear on this, there were repeated attempts at speaking to the hotels in order to get their information in order to make this study?
Yes, as CLA office knows, knows more about.
I can't hear you.
How about now?
Yes.
Correct, Councilwoman, in the beginning of this year, our office has approximately three conversations with the Hotel Association, seeking data such as an average wage, a minimum wage, a maximum wage across the city. I received a call a few months later from a lobbyist in the Hotel, from the Hotel Association, after not receiving those data, and I said I need to get that ASAP. It has not, it has not been provided to this date.
Oh, okay, so there are, yeah, go ahead.
And then the written requests, also, that also went to the Chamber of Commerce and for the California State and Lodging Association, asked for basically three things. First was a list of hotels in the city with 100, with 60 or more rooms, the number of workers at each of those locations and the types of workers at those locations, along with their hours, and along with mean and median wages. To this date, that information has not been provided, and that is what has largely hamstrung our consultant.
Yeah, that's unfortunate that despite repeated attempts, the hotel industry has failed to provide pertinent information that could really inform this study. Now, Mr. David, I have a question for you. In your probably many years of doing research, in the absence of very important information, isn't it customary that you make assumptions in order to conduct this study?
Uh, it's unavoidable, actually. If you want to inform policymakers, there's always uncertainty, number one, and we try to deal with that by creating scenarios, but we want to improve visibility for policymakers. So we use what information is available and try to be clear about what's not available. Uh, and right now, we're working at the industry level, which, as I've said, is unsatisfactory in some ways, but we literally can't fabricate data. That's, that's not a substitute.
Yeah, you can't fabricate data, and with the information and the efforts that you made, thank you so much for doing that. You've shown us evidence that the regional growth is three-to-one, which is pretty amazing.
It is, and it's driven by this, this thing, which is called low-income expenditure. It's kind of ironic in a way that that stimulus is coming from.
Yeah, when we support low-wage workers, they can contribute to our economy and bolster the city.
I would like to, you know, just say that I appreciate the work of the CLA and everything y'all have done, and especially to the workers who have shown up repeatedly, regularly, consistently, coming into the chambers to tell us about how an increase like this will support your livelihood, and you not letting us forget until we're getting to this point. And so I really appreciate your commitment. There are 28 people out there who haven't eaten in over, in three days, that have been fasting for three days for us to make sure that they know that this is a priority for them. They're tired, they're weak, they've had to get checkups with doctors to make sure that they're physically okay, because that's how committed they are to making sure that everybody that they work with, all the tourism workers, get a wage that finally allows their families to not just try to survive in Los Angeles, but to try to thrive in Los Angeles. So thank you, workers, for your commitment and all the work that you've done to get us here. I think all of us can recognize the importance of giving raises here in the city of Los Angeles. In fact, this body has voted several times in the last year and a half to give raises to our city workers, because we know having a higher wage means that you might be able to own a home, that you'll be able to take your family to the doctor, to Disneyland, to do the things that right now are so unattainable for folks because their wage doesn't allow it. And so I just want to remind us and ground us in that, that we recognize the benefit of increasing wages and that it should also benefit our tourism workers. My question is, and I have a couple, but you talked about low-income expenditure. Can you please share a little bit more about that? Because there's an idea that this will impact our tourism, you know, tax revenue. I, I think from what you're saying and what low-income expenditure will do is, in fact, increase the tax revenue that we generate as a city overall, because we will have more people in the city of L.A. spending more money. But can you clarify what that is? And if I was going in the right direction?
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Yes, I'd be happy to do that. I want to make it, I want to clarify from the beginning that the growth benefits that come with this policy, this so-called three-to-one policy, apply to all the fiscal accounts of the economy, both local, city, state, and federal taxes. And our estimates are that, that this ordinance would, by 2028, create $15 million in additional local, that's L.A. City tax revenue, $22 million in state revenue, and $83 million in federal revenue, some of which you might be able to bargain back in your relationship with the feds. But they're very, very strong positive fiscal benefits, most coming from local sales taxes, where low-income families spend their money supporting the retail sector and the small retail sector particularly. There may be some challenges for adjustment in the hospitality sector at the small enterprise level, but small enterprises are going to benefit handsomely from the redistribution to low-income families. Those are the, their primary patrons are those populations in their own neighborhoods. So, but at the same time, it'll be generating retail sales tax. Also, on the T O T, we did, after some consultation, do some estimates of the T O T. We'd like to do more of that, but for the time being, I can say without, without reservation that the T O T effects of, in these scenarios, will be very negligible, like less than 2%, plus or minus 2% change in T O T, far outweighed by the local tax benefits and the state tax benefits. So the ratio of local fiscal benefit to T O T changes would be about 12 to 1. T O T is important in its own dedicated fiscal category, but the benefits of local, local public coffers are going to be very substantial if this policy is adopted.
Great, thank you. And two more points, Council President, I'm done, I'll be, okay, thank you. So you talked about this 97% chance of keeping your job, and you mentioned that earlier, and based on your research and the research you've done around here and other jurisdictions, can you, um, can you talk a little bit more, more about that, please?
Yes, I'll give you the simplest example. If we look at California. If we look at California employment in these hospitality sectors, that state employment since the state minimum wage was enacted, the variation in that employment for those sectors is plus or minus 1% to 3%. And as I said, there are many other drivers of that employment rate. COVID, late COVID, especially in the food sector, as I said, the tail of COVID, which has been really persistent there. Also, overall inflation has been very hard on employment, but the fluctuations there are less than 3%. So that's why I say you have a 95, 97% chance of keeping your job, even if the minimum wage is implemented, based on the state data. And also, the retrospective study, the TIL study, maybe you can talk about that.
So after the city passed its minimum wage standard in 2016, it instructed our office to commission a study every three years to examine the economic impacts of that study on the local economy. About a month and a half ago, we released that study. It has been posted to the file. It was done by Tilvan Wachter, who's one of the world's leading labor economists at UCLA. His study largely shows that there were no detectable employment losses in the food services sector after the wage increases.
Thank you so much. And I will end it here, but what I'd just like, the last thing I would like to say is that I would like, I would hope that as a governmental body, that we can be consistent and equal in our application of elevating people's wages. They don't need to be all the same across sectors, right? But if we're going to give wage increases in one area of the city and not do it for another, that is not equality, and we need to move towards that, right? We, I just think it's so important, we need to be consistent on that. And today I stand, and I just want to say thank you to Council President Marquis Sares Dawson for getting us to this point, where you've gotten us to a place where all people have spoken, we've heard them all, and we've got into a place where people aren't going to lose out like they would have. So thank you for allowing conversation, but also thank you for getting us to the finish line.
And I want to thank you, Ms. Hernandez, for bringing attention to the fact that, yes, as a city, we did provide a number of substantial salary increases. We're also currently experiencing hiring freezes as a result of that. So thank you for helping to underscore what the detrimental effects could very likely be to the very same business owners that we, as a city, are currently experiencing. In fact, our Bureau of Contract Administration has also just indicated that in order for them to even do, conduct the oversight in the roles that they have for BCA with respect to honoring this ordinance, that they would need an additional five positions in order to be able to provide that monitoring. So we know the consequences of what happens when you increase your overall costs for labor, but you don't increase your revenue. And that's what we, as a city, are currently experiencing. And so when you now assign that to private sector entities, that again, not government dollars, but we're saying people that have invested in developing businesses to operate in the city, to provide those good jobs, now overnight, we're going to increase 30% of their bottom line, it will have the same, I don't understand, because we're living through it right now, so we can, we are our own test case on this, as far as I'm concerned. We already know what the effects are. And so, so I recognize the potential impact to these very same operators in that same manner. One of the questions that I have, we talked about, you're saying, you know, it's, we haven't seen the unemployment. Have you seen underemployment of individuals, thereby the redaction of hours for what people work as a result of these? Because, and I ask because I want to thank you for acknowledging how the pandemic has still affected, we, you know, LA Times just finished talking about the 65 restaurants that have just closed this year. We continue to see additional restaurants. I know in many of the areas that have historically sustained a lot of the restaurant industry that have done incredibly well in areas like Silver Lake and whatnot, I continue to see the number of restaurants, because restaurants, obviously, in very significant ways, operate on margins that are substantially far more lean than even to be conflated with general hotel operations. And so I want to thank you for acknowledging that you recognized that those food industry, the food industry has been adversely impacted still and is still lagging in its recovery. I want to thank you for that public acknowledgement, because what we have not aggregated in this conversation, colleagues, for policy, is the proposal to ensure that we don't adopt policies that have adverse implications for the very same operations in the hotels. We've not aggregated it, because the council president decided to eliminate the opportunity for us as a policymaking body to consider some of those amendments that many of us proposed. And that's unfortunate, because it will have very dire implications for the sustained operations for a lot of these businesses. So silencing the conversation does not help us to have a robust policy conversation. To cherry pick certain amendments to be included in a substitute motion is not responsible policymaking. And it's unfortunate that this is where we find ourselves right now. And so I'm very disappointed procedurally how this has occurred, because it has shut down a lot of the proposed amendments that many of us were trying to help make adjustments on, so that we could ensure the success of both the operators and the workers. But we are being shut down from that. So I want to make it clear, for those of you advocating on whatever side you're on, everyone has a perspective, and our job is to make sure that we have policymaking that is respectful of all of those parts of the conversation. But that isn't what's happening right now. That part is being silenced. And we're living currently, as a city right now, learning for the very, reeling from the very same adverse impacts of those same salary increases. And, by the way, not expanding our workforce, limiting it, and not even allowing the opportunity for departments to currently restore the hiring that we so desperately need. That is a reality. So we can talk about all the theories, but we know what the, what the true cost of making these decisions is, and we're living with it right now. And so for that, I have a really big problem with the substitute motion. I think it does a complete disservice to everyone that has a vested interest in this conversation.
And this is what I heard today from your answers, Professor. It's going to increase, but, because what we're really, what we're really talking about here is putting more money in people's pockets. And what's the effect of that? That's what we studied. What would this living wage have an effect on the city of Los Angeles? And what I've heard today is that it's going to increase, it's going to create thousands of jobs, because when you put money in people's pockets, unlike the very wealthy who hoard that money, our communities go out there and spend it. That's going to create more demand on jobs. When that money is spent, we create, they create, we capture a sales tax, which goes into our city coffers, and it's going to create 6,319 jobs. It's going to increase our tax revenue. And there's been some concerns about our TOT, what that will look like, and the professor said that it's going to be either plus or minus 1% to 2%. Very negligible amount, even in the worst-case scenario. But in fact, if you look at the TOT revenues over the previous years, we've seen that it's consistently gone up, and in this last year, it was at record levels, especially for hotels. So it's not the first time we've done this policy, so we can also look at the past to see what we can predict, so we can try to predict the future. And there's been lots of comments about businesses closing and job loss, and, you know, I get that that's, that moves a lot of folks, because we see that every single day. You know, a restaurant in my district is going to close at the middle of this month, and that, of course, worries me. But when you look at the evidence about these policies, you see no direct evidence that this will create job loss. And so I think what we have in front of us, it's a pretty amazing policy. And what is not described in your study is how is that going of the workers' testimony, real-life testimony about how their lives are going to change? Now luckily, the workers who have come here consistently and have fought for this policy have given us that, have given us that evidence. They're talking to us about how they can't pay rent, how they can't save enough to take their kids to college, how they are suffering under the very policies that we've created in the city for many years. And so what I'm seeing here today is a slam dunk for everybody. This policy is exactly what we need in the city of Los Angeles. And again, I want to thank everyone who has brought this forward, and I thank the council president for really ushering us to this moment. And, you know, I just, I think, I speak for the majority of people in Los Angeles that they want to see this, and if possible, council president, I would like to take a vote on this item.
Just so I understand, you know, when, you know, I've heard you say it over and over, I've heard some of my colleagues say it about how when wages increase, there's no correlation to job loss. Is that, is, so help me understand, what are you, is that like when all federal minimum wage goes up, or like, why don't we, why don't we pay everyone $100 an hour? Like, why don't we, in the city of Los Angeles, why do we not pay our very own employees? Why do we not pay them the same exact amount that we are proposing? Why? I, colleagues, I'll tell you why. Because we can't afford to. Because when we do that, make that choice, then we have to make cuts in other areas. We have to lower the amount of jobs in other areas to make up that pay. So can you explain to me why, if we were to raise them, everyone in the city to $100 an hour, that won't, there has to be some sort of curve that you're trying to explain to us. Can you explain to us what that, what that means?
The law of gravity has not been repealed. The demand for labor does change with the wage, but the question is the degree to which it changes. I'm sure you'll all remember this from taking an introductory economics course. There's a fiendish concept called elasticity. That's the magnitude of the change. The direction is not, it's not controversial, remember, it's, you're absolutely right, your intuition is correct. If you raise the wage, you will reduce demand for labor. How much is the question? I can tell you that by looking at the evidence that we've seen for California, both the last wage, minimum wage legislation five years ago, and the most recent state minimum wage, there is no data that would validate a significant relationship. You just can't identify the role of a minimum wage implementation, so it's very small. One mitigating reason for that is when you increase wages for workers, there are many benefits for employers. Workers are more loyal, you increase retention, reduce turnover costs, training costs. They also tend to be more productive. That's why the tech sector works the way it does. People seem to have absurd compensation there, but they're also absurdly productive. So the productivity effect and the retention effects are not insignificant. And for that reason, employers will often look for offsetting savings in order to finance higher wages.
First of all, I just want to sort of express frustration that I'm feeling right now. We were literally, we have literally discussed this item for more, for many hours. We were one vote away from doing this thing, and in a very coordinated way, a flurry of amendments have come in. And personally, I am offended by that, and it's an embarrassment that we are acting this way, considering that we've had so much time to talk. These amendments could have been introduced at the beginning of the meeting, that we're not. And I'm speaking, I'm speaking. Thank you so much. And yes, you know, we've had numerous meetings about the LBEs in, at the airport, and that's why we, why I introduced with Councilmember Price Amendment Number Four that speaks to this. And I want to repeat this. It's to find, to create a financial distress concessionary in Lawa that, with options for rent relief, modifications to hours of operations, facade improvements, permit fee refunds, technical assistance, and assistance securing low-interest loans. It's because we heard from those businesses and see what is the, what is the support that we can give them. And I think the fundamental difference here is, I believe that we should be supporting those businesses. I just don't think that that support should come off of the workers' backs. The workers should not be the ones taking a pay cut in order to support this. The city has enormous amount of resources and energy and talent, and we can find that support in other means. Let's look for the low-interest loans. I think it is unfair that our local businesses, enterprises are having to compete with multinationals and can't secure the same loans. So let's go find those loans for them. Let's go find the things that we can support them, but it should not come off of the workers' backs. And so I'm asking to, not only for this amendment, I'm asking not only for this amendment to be shot down, but all the amendments we should be voting. No, we have a policy that takes into consideration many of the opinions, and so I'm asking for a no vote on this one and a no vote on all the amendments that are being brought forward at that last minute.
Thank you. And I just want to clarify for the record, Mr. Soto Martinez, many of us actually introduced these amendments, and yet, a backroom deal that eliminated and received and note and filed all of our amendments is what came before us. So to be clear, we actually procedurally honored that and respected that in respect to all parties that are affected by this policy. However, the council president and select individuals were informed on a backroom deal that basically silenced all of our substitute motions. And procedurally, each one of us should have the opportunity to present our motions and our amendments and have them voted up or down, but that was denied. So yes, procedurally, and my colleagues unfortunately are currently being denied additional amendments. And by the way, I was also denied an opportunity to speak on my amending motion, because the council president chose not to acknowledge me. So procedurally, yes, this is a mess, but by design. And it wasn't by the colleagues that are trying to actually responsible, responsibly honor the rules and procedures to have good policymaking and dialogue, and that is the problem. So colleagues, again, I know Ms. Padilla and Mr. Lee still have additional amendments for consideration. All of us are trying to get to a place that makes this policy functional for everybody, because no one's trying to deny it. We're just trying to make it work for everybody so that they can continue to operate in the city of Los Angeles.
Councilmember Padilla.
Okay, so I know this has been a long meeting. I know that people are incredibly interested in what is being discussed here. But I ask that you please keep the noise to a minimum while the members are trying to speak. Sorry. Councilmember Padilla.
Yes, so, you know, it's fine to be offended that a ton of amendments come at the end, but I have said it multiple times, what is even more offensive is the lack of collaboration with all of our teams ahead of today to figure out what would be a true compromise. So I know that I've been very vocal about that. I've been very vocal about that. I wish that we would have considered the hotel workers differently than the LAX workers, but this is where we are today. But to say that we worked collaboratively to reach a compromise is not accurate. I was ready to be a yes vote today, but what is not cool with me is that the final language was put in front of me minutes before a vote. And now that it has been put in front of me minutes before the vote, yes, I'm looking at the language, and even the one, what I thought was a compromise to what I wanted completely is opposite of what I was trying to do, which just shows the importance of why we need to engage often and not just here. So with that, this is my amendment. I move that the council replace Recommendation Seven of the substitute motion for Item 66 of today's agenda with the following, because this is language that truly gets to what I wanted versus what was presented to us. In December of 2025, or when the Department of Tourism verifies that the city has reached 2009 annual hotel occupancy levels, whichever comes first, council will consider the economic conditions and assess whether it be necessary to implement a public housekeeping training ordinance. I never said, tell me in 90 days whether it be appropriate to start in December. What I wanted to know was to figure out whether it be appropriate that we even need it. So therefore, this is my new, my new language.
All right, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Mr. Soto, I apologize that you're offended by it. My amendment is listed on the screen as 23A. This is not something that is brought up. This is something that was brought up at the meeting before.
I want to make sure that when we are, the city has made the mistake in the past of passing something and then having to rescind it. I don't want to rescind this. I don't want to rescind this.
Yes.
If we go ahead and move forward on this, I want to make sure that it's in solid enough of a ground.
I think you-
So that we, we are not rescinding it. So that's, that's where my concern comes from.
Yeah, as I, I think you can take comfort in the fact that 19 municipalities and seven counties have done this in California without reporting any significant secondary effects like the ones you described. And at the same time, I actually really support the idea of a, of a look back in three years, just to see how the, this policy is performing. Well, the evidence that was gathered by my two colleagues here indicated that what was the decision that was made five years ago did not have significant adverse effects on the labor market, but there could still be a more detailed study of how the industry adjusted to that. And that's usually a good idea. That's what we call adaptive policy, basically.
But one of the impacts, as you mentioned just a minute ago, is that new investments of hotels might go to other places.
That's easier, because there's no fixed commitments to write, to write down, but the benefits of proximity are really important in the hospitality sector, as you're well aware, I think. So it would take, I think, probably more significant cost differentials for them to locate further, significantly further away, but we have seen this in, in large sporting events. That is often more driven by policy. For example, in the Olympic category, developing countries tend to move, they tend to build in several different cities in order to distribute the economic benefits of the, of the event, and you might see some incentives from competing jurisdictions. That won't be driven by wages, though, because they're just not big enough to provide a sustained competitive advantage.
All right, and now the item is before us. Let's open the roll. Councilmember Rodriguez.
I was supposed to be registered as a no. My button isn't working there.
Councilmember Rodriguez, registered as a no vote.
For the record, the vote is 12 ayes, 3 noes.
All right.
I'm pushing my button to make a quick remark.
Okay.
Colleagues, I just wanted to say, I've been incredible, I've already voiced my incredible disapproval for the procedure and lack thereof with this process. It is completely disregarded, everybody that is affected by these policies, and in fact, it's been so egregious in the way that this was all conducted, and the way that it's all been jammed through, trying to silence any of us and our proposed amendments. Just to have an honest conversation about it, it's absolutely wrong, and it's a failure of process and a failure to include the voices of everyone that is affected by this, by these policies. And it's for that reason, I actually was prepared, we were talking about it yesterday. I said, you know, with some amendments, with some thoughtful conversations, I was prepared to be a yes on this. But this, the way that it's been handled is so foul and so disrespectful, that I just unfortunately now can't even be any part of it. So I'm just incredibly disappointed by procedurally how this was handled, the lack of respect for the colleagues that have all proposed a variety of amendments just to be included. It was, we were attempted to be silenced from the very beginning, and that's unfortunate, because that's not what good leadership looks like. And I will be casting unfortunately a no vote.
Councilmember Park. Councilmember Park.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to reiterate my concerns, my disappointment and dovetail-
You pull your mic up.
And detail off of what Councilwoman Rodriguez said. You know, there were a lot of people that worked very hard, who spent countless hours meeting with interested parties and stakeholders to try to understand the reality, since we weren't provided with that information in the report that we paid for. It's unfortunate that so much work went into this, and we were deprived of the basic opportunity to speak on our amendments and presented with a package that most of us had never even seen or had time to discuss or discuss with stakeholders. And to present it as a compromise suggests perhaps that some skilled negotiator mediated between the parties through a series of concessions and gains and resulted in agreed-upon outcome. That is not what happened here. The substitute motion isn't agreed upon by any of the stakeholders in the room. I'm a no, and for the city of Los Angeles and our tourism industry as a whole, we should be all a no. We have an opportunity to do this right and to be thoughtful about it and to protect both our businesses and our workers. I wanted to be a yes today, and there was a pathway to do it, but it is not this substitute motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Padilla.
No, I just, again, I voted yes, because to me, this is about the workers, and it was always about the workers for me. But I also wanted to be able to proudly say that we compromised and that we paid attention to all stakeholders, because we really did it. So I just want to make sure that I say that I hope this never happens again. I know that I have been very vocal about how unfair it was, and it felt like it was a backroom deal, because every time I would ask my team, so what's the update? So what's the update? There was never an update. Our legislative teams were not brought to the table one by one, the way good citywide policy is supposed to be done. So I just want to make sure that I just hope this never happens again.
Thank you so much. The question is now before us. There are no speakers on the queue. Item 66, as, the Substitute Motion for 66 is now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, 3 noes. The Substitute Motion passes.
Mr., folks, folks, if you can quiet down, we have business still before us. Mr. Clerk, what's before us?